Pledge of Allegiance. At this point, I should like to announce that our current or now former chairman, Mr. Gary Gelsner, has been appointed to the city council and so has tendered his resignation from the commission, and so he will obviously be absent. Also absent this evening are Commissioners Slosser and Williams. All right, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for our last-
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Miller and a second from Commissioner Peters. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. The minutes have been approved. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak about anything that's troubling them or on their mind? Go ahead, Gary.
My name's Gary Gelsner. As Sean said, I am the former chairman of the commission and I've served on the commission for almost eight years, and I want to say publicly how much I enjoyed working on the commission and working with the planning and zoning department, and how much I'm going to miss you guys, and I know I'm leaving the commission in very good hands. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve, and I know you guys are going to do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. We appreciate your service and know that you're moving on to a more interesting job. Okay. Disclosure of ex parte communication. Sorry. Before we go, we'll go back to public comments. Say your-
My name is Stephen Hoffman. I apologize in advance for perhaps not understanding the way that the order is structured here, but I have a- I was reading some of the agenda items, and should I wait until the agenda's in motion in order to offer some of the-
Are you here for the zoning ordinance? Yeah, then it would be appropriate at that time. After we take public- or staff testimony, we'll have an opportunity for the public. No, no worries at all. All right, disclosure of ex parte communication? All right. Well, then, on to new business, which is the only thing on our agenda for the- only business on our agenda for this evening, which is case 10-220-0005, the zoning text amendment for the medical marijuana dispensaries. I will open the public hearing, and we will hear from Mr. Schmitz.
Mr. Chairman and commission members, good evening. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment which would amend Articles Two, which is the definitions section, Article Three for zoning districts, and Article Four, which is the section on special uses, uses requiring additional evaluation and nonconforming uses in buildings of the Goodyear zoning ordinance, and it's all related to regulating medical marijuana uses. By way of background, Proposition 203 is the Arizona Medical Marijuana Act, and it was passed by the voters in the November 2nd general election. And essentially, it authorizes the use, sale, and cultivation of medical marijuana in the state of Arizona, and it also authorizes cities to enact reasonable zoning regulations. Basically, under the act, medical marijuana may be possessed or cultivated only by a registered qualifying patient, a registered designated caregiver, or a registered nonprofit medical marijuana dispensary agent. It allows establishment of nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries, and a dispensary may acquire, possess, cultivate, manufacture, deliver, transfer, transport, supply, sell, or dispense marijuana and related supplies and educational materials. It also may cultivate marijuana on-site or at a designated off-site location, and all cultivation must be in an enclosed locked facility that is at least 500 feet from any existing public or private school. Under the act, the consumption of marijuana on the site of a dispensary is prohibited. The dispensary must have only one secure entrance. The principal officers of the dispensary must be over 21 years of age and never been convicted of an excluded felony offense or been on the board of a dispensary that had its certificate revoked. Also, by state law, dispensary may not sell more than two and one-half ounces of marijuana to a registered qualifying patient or registered designated caregiver in any two-week period. The- under the act, the Arizona Department of Health Services is charged with enacting rules governing dispensaries and the issuance of registration cards to qualifying patients within 120 days of the passage of the act. And as we understand, the draft rules are scheduled to be issued by the Department of Health Services by December 17th, which is this Friday. Under the act, the number of dispensary registration certificates that can be issued in the state is limited to one for every 10 registered pharmacies in the state, and based on the number of pharmacies in the state right now, that's been estimated to be about 125. Now, moving on to the zoning ordinance amendment, basically, the zoning ordinance amendments start with new definitions. The definition of medical marijuana will be added along with definition for medical marijuana designated caregiver cultivation, medical marijuana qualifying patient cultivation, a medical marijuana dispensary, and then medical marijuana off-site cultivation and location. A registered qualifying patient is a person who has been diagnosed by a physician as having a debilitating medical condition, and in the state act, its debilitating medical condition is defined as cancer, glaucoma, AIDS, hepatitis C, ALS, Crohn's disease, Alzheimer's disease, and there's other diseases that have symptoms that are debilitating. And the Department of Health Services is also authorized to add additional conditions to the list as it sees fit. For qualifying patient and caregiver, a registered qualifying patient may cultivate up to 12 marijuana plants at his or her primary residence if such residence is more than 25 miles from a registered dispensary. And a registered designated caregiver may cultivate up to 60 plants for other registered qualifying patients. The proposed ordinance would limit this activity to locations that are more than 25 miles from a registered dispensary as well. The- with respect to the dispensaries themselves, the proposed ordinance has been drafted to allow dispensaries to sell or cultivate on-site by right in the C2, I1, or I2 districts subject to certain separation and development standards. Medical marijuana off-site cultivation location would be allowed only in the I1 or I2 districts, and they too would also be subject to certain separation and development standards. These uses would not be allowed in existing PAD districts that do not have an underlying C2, I1, or I2 district specified in the PAD. In that instance, to allow a location in one of those districts would require an amendment of the PAD and which would go through a public hearing process. The separation requirements proposed in the ordinance are listed here. The 2,000-foot separation between medical marijuana dispensaries or another off-site cultivation location, 500 feet from a residential zoning district, 1,000 feet from a public or private school, 1,000 feet from a preschool, daycare, or childcare center, 1,000 feet from a public park, library, or community center, 1,000 feet from a church or place of worship, and 2,000 feet from a licensed residential substance abuse treatment facility. The development standards related to dispensaries include that they must be located in a permanent building, not located in a trailer or cargo container or some mobile or modular building. The maximum gross floor area of a medical marijuana dispensary is not to exceed 2,500 square feet. The secure storage area within the dispensary is not to exceed 500 square feet of the total 2,500 square foot maximum gross floor area. The site should have an interior customer waiting area equal to 25% of the gross floor area, and permitted hours of operation shall be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Shall not have drive-through service, not offer a service that provides off-site delivery, and shall not provide outdoor seating areas. With respect to the off-site cultivation, the standards are similar. The primary difference is that the secure storage area shall not exceed 1,000 square feet of the total 2,500 square foot maximum area. This map is a depiction of the C2 and industrial zoning districts in the city of Goodyear to give you an idea of where those are located. There's about 1,396 acres of C2, 1,500 acres of I1, 833 acres of I2 that are currently entitled out of the total city limits, which is about 121,000 acres. This map, which was in your agenda packet, is an attempt to estimate the number of potential locations based on those zoning districts and maintaining a 2,000-foot separation between potential dispensary sites. This is not to say that a dispensary is going to necessarily go in the locations shown, but it was just an attempt to estimate the- effectively the maximum number under existing zoning that could be cited with that separation requirement. There's an estimated nine potential sites in existing buildings and 37 potential sites based on existing zoning and proposed separation standards within the city, based on current zoning. Basically, the ordinance has been drafted to provide a reasonable opportunity for these types of uses to be cited within the community, while at the same time attempting to provide some separation standards and safeguards to minimize any potential negative impacts. The state of Arizona at this point does not have experience with these types of facilities, and it was felt that it would be prudent to take this approach in drafting the proposed regulations. And we would ask that the commission consider recommending to the city council approval of the proposed ordinance. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks and stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have any question?
My question is, when you talked about the matrix as to the footage, the square- the footage, how did you come about the decision of the numbers like 1,000 feet or 2,000? That's number one, and number two, if it has to be 2,000 feet from a licensed residential substance abuse treatment facility, then I'd like to see it be 2,000 from a public or private school and 2,000 from a preschool, daycare, childcare center. That's it.
Chairman Lux and Commissioner Miller, the 2,000-foot separation requirement was determined to be a reasonable distance to avoid over-concentration of the uses in a single area, which is roughly, it's almost about a half mile apart. That is the purpose of that separation requirement. The other separation requirements were intended to provide an adequate distance between this type of use and other, if you will, protected uses, and the 1,000-foot requirement came in based on existing separations that are found in state law with respect to drug-free zones around schools in particular. It was felt that that distance would be defensible.
And that's really worked. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are we the only city with the nine-to-five rule, or have other cities followed that same hours of operation kind of standard?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Peters. Off the top of my head, I don't think I can recite exact cities which did exact hour limitations. I know that there are cities that are entertaining hours of limitation- hours of operation limitations. Whether or not they've been adopted yet, a lot of the cities are in the same situation that we are with the recent adoption. They're just now developing their rules and regulations, and- but some of the draft ones I've seen did have hours specified.
Mr. Chairman, I may have overlooked it, but are there additional security requirements that, you know, in addition to state law that we have also implemented, or are we kind of waiting on DHS to establish those security standards?
At this point, we are relying on what the state would develop on that. There is a requirement that in order to get registered as a dispensary, they have to have a- submit a security plan with their application, and at this point, we would be relying on the state rules. Not knowing exactly what the state rules are yet, though, that is an area that potentially could change once we see a draft.
And, Mr. Chairman, final question. Do we have a sense of how many applications or how many people are in the pipeline already for dispensaries for the city of Goodyear?
As far as potential applications, I don't know that we've received any at this point. We know that we have- the city clerk's office has had some contacts, but I don't have any specific numbers to give you.
Joe.
Questions?
No, that's a thank- no, just thank you. All right. Now, we will entertain comments from the public, and if you haven't, we had cards outside to sign, but you can do that later. You can come up and please identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Henry Short. My question really is one of understanding from the standpoint of if a dispensary is located in Site A and meets all of the qualifications, what happens if a daycare center or a church or something moves in within that restricted distance? Is the dispensary grandfathered in? Is the- is my comment understood? And this is just curiosity, and I would appreciate a comment on that.
Mr. Chairman, in response to that question, the- once a dispensary is established and another use comes in, the dispensary would- I hesitate to use the word grandfathered in, but it would not be required to cease its operation. It would- the separation would be determined at the time the dispensary goes in from existing land uses.
Thank you, and I presume that there would also be some consideration by whatever future use would come in with respect to being located near a dispensary?
Mr. Chairman, that would be the duty or the responsibility of that potential user to do its own due diligence.
Right, thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Stephen Hoffman, and I plan on applying for a registration certificate to operate a dispensary and cultivation site, which, if business plans allow, will be both of those located within the city of Goodyear. I think that so far, this document looks pretty thorough and well-thought-out. I did want to address one item here that was quoted where it says, "Police Chiefs Association of California has mentioned that one concern, of course, is the illegal sale of marijuana to dispensary patrons by others at a price less than dispensary prices." And I've been doing a lot of research about this topic, and one way to, of course, get around that is not to put any undue burden upon the cultivation facilities in regards to their cost of production. And I have some math here that may or may not be helpful, and I brought enough copies to pass out if that's allowed or suggested, so.
Yeah.
You can submit it, okay?
Yep, you can submit that, yeah. You can just hand them to the clerk and then-
What this document basically does is describes harvest times, harvest weights, consumer demand, in such a fashion that it breaks down to how much product can be produced in a cultivation facility on basically a per-square-foot basis, because the math used in my business plan drafting breaks down pretty simply in order to find out exactly how profitable a business of this nature would be. But what I have found is that while you can fit the number of plants required within the 2,500 square feet, that does not allow for a single bit of walking space for staff who must maintain the plants to operate. There would be zero walking space available. And so, about additional 40% walking space would be needed in order to cultivate the plants, and maybe an additional 300 for such things as packaging and office space. And this data comes up with a number of right around 3,600 square feet, and all that that will do, as a bare minimum of square footage, is serve 80% of projected customers for one dispensary if they purchase 20% of their allotted amount. So, that 3,600 square feet is an extremely conservative estimate. And what will happen is most of these dispensaries will very quickly outgrow their facility and have to take some measures to meet the demand of the public. And all this research is based upon the existing customer demand in Colorado, and we're going to have a higher per-dispensary demand based upon the fact that we're going to put a really strict cap on the number of dispensaries. With only 124 of those, and cardholder- marijuana consumption cardholders expected to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 100,000-plus people, there's going to be more customers per dispensary here in the state of Arizona than Colorado or California. And I actually appreciate that because we're going to have a little stricter regulation, a little bit more of a standard to uphold so that our industry does not run helterskelts as has happened in our neighboring state of California. I don't know, but we can certainly ask.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff. Joe, does 25- is it 2,500 or 2,400 square foot max, regardless of what it is, is that similar to what other cities are doing, or is that prescribed by-
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Peters, that is correct. It's what is being entertained by some of the other cities, and I believe the idea is to also avoid an over-concentration of product in one location. So, I appreciate the comment that was made. You know, we'd probably like to take an opportunity to review the numbers and the information submitted, but that is why it was developed the way it was.
Joe, to follow up on that, I mean, do we know- I mean, I know that California and Colorado have- don't have such limits, but, you know, on the number of dispensaries, but do we know the size, you know, of typical dispensaries in those states?
Mr. Chairman, to the best of my knowledge, it's the regulations in Colorado and California don't have square footage limits, and/or, for that matter, a lot of limits on number of dispensaries, and so that may be part of the concern or part of the problem. So, I don't know that we can compare them apples to apples. I will admit that Arizona's act is better than the act for the other states, so we can be a little more optimistic that this might work better than it has in other states, but I don't think we can compare the numbers to the other states.
Right, okay, no, that's-
I forgot my question.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up. You don't have to- you can either cultivate and produce and dispense at a site, or you can have a site that only does this cultivation, and you could also own a site that does the dispensing, correct? Or is it all different entities?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Peters, a dispensary can cultivate and sell from the same site, or they can have a off-site location as well.
Mr. Chairman, do those off-site locations have minimum or maximum space requirements? Square footage requirements?
Yes, it also has a maximum space requirement of 2,500 square feet, although the storage amount allowed- the storage is larger. It's double.
And the dispensaries can buy from- or the cultivation site can sell to any number of dispensaries it wants to, correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
Joe, I have a question. Are we under a time crunch to get this right, or what?
Chairman Lux and Commissioner Miller, the concern is that if rules aren't in place within the 120-day time period, that the potential users have recourse under the act to force things to happen. So, we're anticipating that the state will have its rules in place by April. So, we are in a relatively short timeframe, although we're not super rushed, I suppose.
Mr. Hoffman, you had a-
Yes, please. If I look at this document, which I downloaded from the internet, which I believe is tonight's agenda, if I look under- Let's see, there's a page that specifies the distances from various facilities, and then following that, there's a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. And then there's an item that starts likewise, the development, and that's where we get into the square footage. If I look at item number two, it says maximum gross floor area shall be, you know, 2,500 square feet. Item number three says the secure storage area, at least by my interpretation here, should be 1,000 of those 2,500 square feet, thereby limiting the entire cultivation facility, which is my only concern. Let me reemphasize that. I'm totally satisfied with 2,500 square feet for a retail dispensary space, but for a cultivation facility, the math simply does not work out. Any business which plants their flag in Goodyear and tries to abide by this will fail. They'll have to purchase their product elsewhere at a wholesale price, thereby pumping up their retail price to an unmanageable amount, and then you find yourself in the problem where what radiates out from that facility are people trying to take advantage of, the overpaying customer walking away disappointed, "Hey, buddy, I just liked to purchase for less amount because you're paying the highest inflated amount you possibly can." So, it's just not physically possible within 2,500 square feet to cultivate the amount necessary to serve even a portion of the customers that are going to be requiring this type of medicine.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hoffman? All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, any other commission comments or questions?
I don't think we're- I'm not ready to make a vote on this.
And that's fine, because what- there are only four of us this evening, and so, in order to move this along, it would require all four of us in the affirmative.
Correct.
So, I think the preference is, from what I understand, is that we would recommend, well, I- I mean, putting it up for a vote, if, you know, she's not- we're kind of stuck here, I suppose.
Mr. Chairman, now, what are some of your concerns or issues? I mean, Joe, I think Joe's done an excellent job of thoroughly researching and looking at Colorado, California. We got a copy, MAG had a model ordinance. We've looked at other valley ordinances. The concern- the only concern we have is that the Department of Health Services is due to come out with draft regulations by the end of the week, and as soon as the regulations, I guess, up to 120 days, I think they have, so they could do it prior to that time. So, as soon as they promulgate their regulations and they issue licenses to possible dispensaries, those individuals with licenses can go to the cities and locate their dispensaries. So, without any zoning requirements and zoning regulations in place, I mean, they pretty much can locate wherever they want to within the city. So, that's the- that is the concern, and that's why there's, I mean, somewhat of an urgency to it, if you understand what I'm saying. That's the urgency.
I understand that. I also understand what Mr. Hoffman is saying, and I- when we asked the question, well, what's the square footage in a productive, we really don't know. So, in essence, I feel like a number was pulled from the sky, and we will go with this, and one city started it, and everybody just followed along. There's been- I haven't heard- There's been, I haven't heard anything that said that it should be, and why it should be that square footage. That's my concern.
Yeah. That's a legitimate concern. We don't, we don't have a whole lot of background on this, and this is all new territory for us, and so we don't really have a lot of empirical data to go on. We're going with what other cities have proposed. If it becomes a problem down the road, obviously, we can amend the ordinance. That's one way to do it. That, that's one area, one way to approach it.
Well, and, on its face, you know, going from 2,500 to 3,600, I mean...
I'm not saying doing that. I'm not, I'm not saying going to 3,600. I'm simply saying, can I have a little more information? Because I don't want it to come back and we have to do an amendment, or, you know, all over again. Let's do it and do it right. And I understand the 120 days. I just want to know, is this, I mean, where did this number come from? And to say, well, I'm sure someone in some city did something, I hope, but I just want a little more. So if we table this till next month, wouldn't we have a lot more information? Or we can't, that's 30, what, you can't find out?
Wouldn't have an ID or figure on it?
What do you mean? You can't find out information in 30 days? As to, we're talking about square footage of other places?
Well, I think that baseline is...
He wants to come back.
Mr. Hoffman?
Sure.
Actually, today at 3 o'clock, the city of Phoenix had the same meeting, and although I was not able to attend that meeting, they're setting forth the guidelines. And at the time that meeting took place, unless something changed, there were going to be no restrictions on the size of a cultivation facility within the city of Phoenix. The strictest city so far to pass one of these things has been 3,000 square feet on a cultivation facility, and that was in Tucson. So all these cities are, you know, in process of producing this sort of data, and in certain marketplaces, dispensaries are kind of, you know, pushing back and saying, whoa. That's kind of like saying, have a car lot where there's only one car. So I believe the data will be within 30 days, very readily available, as to how the other municipalities have proceeded.
Thank you. Gary, you had a, you're a member of the public, you're here.
As a citizen, I have a couple of concerns, and I also have some recommendations that I would pass along to you from my previous experience. One of my concerns on the ordinance is the restriction of Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. And I have a concern, I don't want to see weekend evening sales, I really don't want to see weekend sales, but I do have a concern with somebody who is working during the 9 to 5 and can't get to a facility. So I think in our zoning, maybe we need to restrict it so that it's Monday, normal hours are Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, with one evening allowed to 9:00 PM or something, chosen by the facility, and they can have one evening. That would be one concern. My second concern, my second concern is the square footage. And I do believe that this is going to be an indoor cultivation under a secure site with lots of electricity and lots of hydroponic water being run through the system. And I think Mr. Hoffman has a valid point, and I think we should probably do more research on it. My recommendation to you, as a former member of this body, would be, you have two ways of doing it. You can table this. Normally, when the commission was busy, we had two meetings, the first Wednesday of every month and the third Wednesday of every month. And that's still, I believe, is still on the calendar. If you don't feel that staff can come up with a recommendation, then, you know, you can ask staff to, you know, bring it back to you, and you'll have more commissioners here. So you can have a meeting within, basically, two or three weeks and not have to wait for an entire month, because there is a time constraint on it. The other option you can do is you can recommend it with your concerns, tell staff to get it worked out before they bring it to council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Mr. Chairman, we wouldn't have a problem with tabling it if, but just let us know what exactly, what issues you want us to research and address before the next, the January meeting? If it's size of the cultivation facility. We noticed the city of Tucson, they have a maximum floor area of 3,000 square feet for theirs. Ours is 2,500. And then of the 3,000 square feet, 1,000, no more than 1,000 needs to be for secure storage area.
So other than cultivation, size, similar...
I think what former Commissioner Gelsner came up, in terms of hours, there are people who work, and 9 to 5 is a difficult time. And I liked his suggestion of a one-evening opportunity for those who work to come and purchase.
Mr. Chairman, I would actually prefer to expand the hours by, you know, an hour or two each night, instead of concentrating everybody in one night and crowded in parking lots and all that. You know, I don't want, you know, I support what we're trying to do on one night, you know, and kind of the thought behind it, but at the same time, I think that's going to really increase traffic in a concentrated period of time and cause problems for the surrounding businesses that are around there that may not have, you know, adequate parking and whatnot. Sure. Or perhaps extend it to some sort of truncated hours on Saturday as well, you know, 9 to noon or something like that, allowing them to, you know, some alternative timeframe by which to obtain their prescriptions or their recommendations. If any, Commissioner Short, did you have anything else to add or any other concerns for staff?
I would be comfortable with a motion of moving it forward with instructions to the city staff to change the hours to accommodate some evening use and to raise the cultivation limit to at least 3,000 square feet, if the rest of the commission is comfortable with that. It seems like our two concerns could be handled by the city staff based on the additional input they could get from other cities between now and the council meeting.
Could we also not consider, or having the baseline of the square footage be 25, and then perhaps allowing for it to be larger based on certain conditions, you know, much like we do density? It's supposed to be this, but, you know, if the X, Y, and Z, then, you know, you can exceed those. I mean, is it possible to determine some sort of methodology to, for that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, if anything's possible, if we get creative enough. But what I hear is, it sounds like most of the concern seems to be on the cultivation end of it. And it is true that other, Phoenix did not put one in their ordinance, or is not putting one in their ordinance at this point. Tucson had 3,000, I believe Mesa was looking at 3,000. So there may be some merit in revisiting that number, and we'd be willing to, you know, accept the tabling and bring it back, or take a recommendation with advice from the commission to evaluate the square footage for cultivation and hours of operation before it goes to city council. Either of those options are acceptable to staff.
Commissioner Miller?
Oh, I'm fine, as long as it's being considered. I'm fine with that.
So you'd be fine with a motion forwarding this along, and then with those caveats that have been discussed, and then it will be then changed or considered for council? That's what...
Yes, because then, because then council will then, of course, make the final decision.
Indeed. Does that work?
That work for you?
Yeah.
You're not happy with it?
No, that's fine. I, we are where we are, and so, you know, we got to move on something, and, you know, whatever advice we can give to staff on making it the best system possible, given the circumstances, I think we should do, you know, knowing that the clock is ticking, and I'd prefer to have something in place than nothing at all by the time the clock runs out.
I think they did, I think staff did a wonderful job. I don't want you to think I didn't think you did a wonderful job. I just don't want it to be quite so narrow.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Miller, we definitely don't want it to be either. We, we've tried to balance the rules and the regulations and not make it so onerous we don't have the facilities, but on the same hand, we want to protect sensitive land uses and try to reach a balance. So that's been our purpose in evaluating the other ordinances, the model ordinance, that's where we came up with these standards, and looking at some of the issues and problems that are, that have plagued, I guess, California and Colorado with this. They've had a lot more liberal ordinance, state regulations on medical marijuana. So I think Arizona's, this is new territory, like I said, for us and the state.
Okay, yeah, from my perspective, you know, I tend to agree that perhaps a little bit expanded hours of operation to allow folks that work, you know, typical office hours, be able to get it, and, you know, I would be even willing to, you know, maybe go to a maximum of 5,000 square feet on the cultivation. And, you know, if, again, the math bears out, you know, I don't think that that's overly onerous, and, but, that's, that's just me. So with that said, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we, the commission approved case 10-220-0005, the zoning text amendment for the medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation, with two charges to the city staff, one to change the hours from Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, to include evening and/or Saturday morning hours to accommodate people that work, and to up the square footage of the cultivation areas to a degree where it makes sense from a business perspective and still stays in line with what other cities are doing, before the zoning amendment goes to council.
I second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Short and a second from Commissioner Miller. You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So ordered. We have recommended approval of this case with the sort of new stipulations, as it were. All right. Do we have anything else?
Thank you.
Staff communications?
Yeah, I'd also like to publicly thank former Chairman Gelsner for his service on the commission and the work he's done as a member, and then more recently as a chairman. He's done an excellent job, and we thank you for your service and wish you the best of luck on your new endeavor on the city council. That brings us to election of a new chair. We, at the next regular meeting in January, will have on their election of a new chair, and I guess a new vice chair, which typically in the first meeting in January, we have election of chair and vice chair, so that'll be on the agenda. And then also, we'll be needing to replace Mr. Gelsner's seat. It's hard to replace him, but we will find someone who will fill his shoes, and so that'll be the next step. Through the interview process, the last two interviews we did, we have some other candidates, or we'll do a new recruitment, one or the other, so that's still being determined.
All right. Thank you, Harvey.
And also wish you happy holidays and the best for the new year.
Thank you. I extend our holiday wishes to the rest of the staff who got a deserved commission meeting off.
Yeah.
All right, well, there's no further business?